Is Monday, February the second, two thousand and fifteen, at nine o'clock in council chambers, and this is the committee of the whole meeting. The first item is introduction of late items. Hearing none, we will move on to delegations. And our first delegation this morning is Paul Dumaree, who is the manager of the Oliver Airport. And we also have Heidi Frank here, who is the C A O for the town of Oliver, who's here to listen to Paul. I thought it was interesting, Paul, before you start, that on Oliver Daily News this weekend, there's a picture of the airport, and it says nineteen thirty-five, which would make it eighty years old. And then there was a report from Jack Benest just this morning, and I haven't had a chance to read it all, that in fact it opened in nineteen thirty-seven, before any of the other airports, Penticton, Vernon, Colona. And I assume Vernon had an airport or has something at that time. Anyway, I thought it was most interesting and very appropriate to have that in the paper today when you're here to talk to us about the services and the future plans of the Oliver Airport. So, welcome, Paul.
Thank you. Thank you, your worship and counsel. I appreciate the opportunity to come and enlighten you on some of the things we've done there in Oliver. Yes, the airport was actually, they say officially opened in thirty-seven, but it started in thirty-five, as you noted in the picture. There's a lot of airplanes on the field. We celebrated our fiftieth back in nineteen eighty-five. So it's been there a long time. It was there before Penticton. It was part of the, originally, the Trans-Canada Airports Program, where you have places like Hope, Princeton, Oliver, Casagar Trail, all the way along, the southern route. And that's what they used to use with little beacon lights. And there was one at the Oliver Airport, and they'd go from light to light, kind of thing. And then they established radio beacons. And then they determined that Carmi was probably more in line with the east-west route, and that's why they abandoned Penticton and moved everything to, I mean Oliver, moved everything to Penticton and put a beacon at Carmi. So that's a little bit of the history, from that perspective, but it's been there. It was a field that was developed and built on, excuse me, on very solid ground. And it used to have three runways, believe it or not. And one was a crosswind runway where the Oliver Place Mall is now. And we lobbed off a piece for the fire hall, you know, quite a few years ago and whatnot. So, anyway, to answer some of your questions, the airport is fully serviced, you know, on the west side with water sewer power. And as anybody's been driving by there, you note there's hangars all along the west side. The northwest quadrant was the first side to be developed. There was a lot of discussion about that at the time, because when the airport was built, I came here in nineteen eighty, when it was built, it was, the ramp was on the west side, in the center. And one of the rules about airport development is you don't develop willy-nilly. You develop one side where the services are first, and, you know, then move along. You don't want to be trying to develop two sides at the same time. You'll end up with traffic crossing the runway, and there's very high security risks and stuff like that. So that's why the early hangars were developed on the west side. And the northwest quadrant was deemed to be the first one to try and fill up, which it pretty much has. And we've now moved to the southwest quadrant, where a new set of ten bay tangiers were built last year. Also, in the northwest, or northeast quadrant, the Air Cadet Building was built quite a few years ago, never fully serviced. And then the search and rescue were given a chunk of land over there to establish themselves. And so that area is now serviced with water sewer power, down to a certain point where elevation and engineering rule the roost, so to speak. You know, at that point was where there's a break, and then the rest of the services, in terms of sewer, have to go the other way. So it was sort of halted there economically to make sense. So, from that perspective, it's, you know, we've got a fair bit of service land yet to work with. Pardon me, the perimeter of the airport has been fenced. That was done quite a few years ago. We did a lot of stuff on the airport since I got here. And I've been involved in every phase of every development that's been on there. And most of it's been, you know, done with grant monies, both federally and provincially, with the old A T A P, Air Transport Assistance Program, which was developed by the B C government many years ago for airport development throughout the province. And a lot of airports were either established or further enhanced through the province. And they had a mandate to try and create as many four-thousand-foot strips at the time. That was sort of the rule that would handle most of the aircraft that we're going to be utilizing, especially the B C Air Services Branch that had a whole pile of citations and stuff like that, the Citation Jet. And fortunately, we were able to capitalize on those things and gain a lot of grant monies to assist in the development of the airport. Fencing the airport was a very expensive procedure, as one can well imagine. That kind of fencing is not cheap. And so it was done in three phases, over a period of about five, pardon me, five years. Not only do you have to do the new fencing, but you've got to dismantle and discard the old nonsense that was there, which was, you know, old railroad-style fencing. We have a security nightlight right in the center of the ramp, above the fuel situation, for, you know, night security purposes. Uh, thank you. Yeah, younger age, he might help too. Another thing we did was, there was, it used to be a telco line at the south end that was strung up along road number one. And it took us quite a while to get rid of that and get them to bury it, because it was a real, real hazard, especially since we increased the length of the runway from, pardon me, twenty-five hundred feet to thirty-two hundred feet back in eighty-three. That's the year that we hosted the Great Western Warbirds, had a disastrous year at the airport. So the runway is actually thirty-two by fifty, you know, paved, marked. And we've got, you know, we've got a hundred by two hundred ramp, which is too small now today. The runway, we actually lit, installed a lighting system back in, I think, eighty-seven, eighty-six, eighty-seven, something of that nature. And that is a very, very trying ordeal, I can tell you. We did it based on numerous contacts and beg borrowing, stealing, and cajoling, and a whole pile of other things, and catching the one Transport Canada guy napping at the wheel, so to speak. Grand Forks have been after a nightlight situation ever since, and they couldn't figure out why we could get one and they couldn't. And they finally did, but theirs is not like ours at all. It's, they have to have somebody turn it on when something's coming in, and then go back and turn it on when they're leaving. So it's kind of, it works, but it's arcane. So our system is on a solid state, what they call R Cal system. So it's pilot-operated, five clicks on the mic inbound, and the lights come on. They stay on for fifteen minutes, and they go off automatically. And if a pilot wants to increase that fifteen minutes or extend it, he just has to click on the mic, and it resets it to another fifteen minutes, if he feels he's going to be touch and go, so to speak, on the timeline. At the time, we also had the opportunity to avail ourselves of an A P A P system, which is an abbreviated precision approach path indicator. You all probably know that the south end of the airport is quite hilly. There's a hillside going down to road two, and that really inhibits the approach path on runway thirty-six, the south approach. So even though it wasn't required, we felt it very prudent to install an A P A P system on the south end, because that gives you a visual guidance for a pilot coming in at night, to make sure that they stay above, well above that, because that's a black hole in the middle of the night. And sometimes you can't see whether you're going to be high enough. And that gives you the appropriate glide path visually to make sure you're going to clear terrain. And even though we did have an argument with Transport about a lot of this kind of stuff, our little airport, they were very, very helpful, and they came and commissioned all that stuff for us after the fact. But that was a real volunteer effort, I can tell you. And lighting is very expensive. At the time, we were investigating doing it. We had, we were, it was pretty common that it cost around a quarter million bucks back then. And because you needed, they kind of figured they wanted these beacon lights up in the hills. And the problem with that is getting power to them and all that kind of stuff back in the day. As you all know, when you go into Penticton, you can see those red lights beaking in the, you know, beaming in the, blinking in the hillsides. And so we were able to get away from that, because we're not, we don't have scheduled carriers or anything of that nature. So that cut down the cost, but still, the lighting system per se, that was above, beyond the quarter million, I should say, because Vernon actually got federal and provincial grants to do the lighting system at the same time, and they went through the conventional route, paying for all the engineering and all the above-board stuff, whereas we used a lot of beer and got things done. And to make a long story short, they spent two-hundred-and-seventy-five thousand bucks for their lighting system. We spent twenty-seven-five, twenty-seven thousand, five hundred dollars. But when we commissioned it that evening, they happened to be commissioning theirs the same evening, unbeknownst to us, but a friend of mine was there and asked me how ours went. And I said, "Well, it went well." A bunch of us took a table out there, drank some beer, and clicked the lights on and watched them. And I said, "How'd yours go?" He said, "Well, it went well to start for the first twenty seconds, then they all fizzled out." And they had to spend another eighty grand remedial work, because they had moles chew the insulation off the cable. So they obviously didn't do their homework. They said, "How come you didn't?" I said, "Well, we cable-plowed conduit in the ground first. We did it the right way." We were fortunate in that a Transport Canada engineer came out to take a look at what it was going to cost us to do this, and he said the same thing, about a quarter million bucks. So I said, "Well, we better go have a beer, because we've got to knock a zero off of that." He wished us well, but he gave us an awful lot of technical support, which was very, very, like I said, they were very helpful. So it's a very expensive ordeal. Today, it's, I don't even know what, I'd hate to think what the cost would be for a lighting system, but it's not cheap. No, that stuff is. We've got a lighted windsock, which you need for a lighting, a lit airport. And we were able to avail ourselves of that from Expo eighty-six. When they finished, as you all know, anybody that's been to Expo eighty-six, they had a lot of those around the Expo site for, I don't know, show and tell, so to speak. And when they finished, they donated a lot of those lighted windsocks airports around the province. And we were, of course, one of the first ones with their hand up, and we got one, and let's save that cost. So we do have ancillary taxiways that support the hangarage system at this point, but not quite complete. There's thirty-five private hangars, and there's two large commercial helicopter hangars at the north end of the field. Both have, you know, helicopter businesses. One was just purchased from a previous helicopter outfit. And the other one, we moved in from Chilowack, and they're, they employ about forty or fifty people, and more in helicopter maintenance than anything else right now. We have a hundred low lead fuel for aviation, which is avgas. And that is run by a society we started, the seven people that, excuse me, took up the cause and purchased the, put together the system, and we operated on a, as a society. And I can tell anybody who says that fuel is a big, huge moneymaker on an airport, we've been at it for eight years, and we are just barely getting in the black. And we have one paid employee that does the books. You know who's slick, and she is probably paid about two-fifty a year. So it's not a money-making thing when you don't have the volume, you know? You need a lot of volume to make a dollar. And we have a twenty-five-thousand-liter tank. We probably go through three or four a year, whereas other places like Vernon, Chilowack, Langley, Pitt Meadows, they probably go through a tank a week, kind of thing. So it's a, makes a huge difference if you don't have the volume. You're, if we had to pay employees to look after everything, it would be a tough business. So most of the work is volunteer. We've got a computerized twenty-four-seven system, so that people just fly in anytime, stick their card in the machine, and do their thing. And she goes out once a month and does all the accounting and whatnot. So it works very well, and it services the public. The biggest thing at the time is the town didn't want to have anything to do with the fuel business. So they weren't about to take it over. It was put in originally by Adam Sabian, and when he decided to retire, he was going to be fixer, so the society bought him out and carried it forward. Because having a fuel, having fuel in an airport is a huge draw. There's a lot of people that won't go if they have to tanker fuel and stuff like that. So it's a, it's a, it's a real, again, it's one of those things, it's a good attraction, it's a good benefit, but they're expensive systems to put in, to install. And not too bad to maintain, but they're damn expensive to install with all the rules and regs that go along with that kind of stuff. So it's, it's just one of those things, the, and I can't blame the town. Why would you want to be involved in something like that that's not going to make any money when you find out that it isn't? It's just going to be a tax burden on the town and the staff and everything else. So it was sort of something done by the society to make sure that, you know, we have continued traffic to, and another asset at the airport for, notwithstanding from a selfish perspective, who the hell wants to tanker fuel? You've got to stop in Penticton to fuel up, either on your way or on your way back, or something of that nature. I used to travel a lot, so for me, it was a pain in the butt to do that, you know? So it was easier to have fuel right here at the home base. There is Jet, Jet A-one fuel at the north end. V M R Aviation established that for the helicopter business. And that's what it services, mainly because we don't have a parallel taxiway to, for turbine aircraft to taxi to, to avail themselves of that facility at this stage of the game. That's one of the things on our improvement list, is a parallel taxiway to the north button, for safety reasons, so people aren't taxiing on the main runway all the time. And so that the traveling public can avail themselves of Jet A fuel for turbine-powered aircraft, as opposed to just helicopters. We, there's a clubhouse come terminal building. The Flying Club put the clubhouse there probably in nineteen eighty-one, as I recall. We hauled it out of here, actually. And probably in about eighty-six or seven or eight, or something like that, the club decided that would, it would be beneficial when the public came to make the building available to the flying public. So we did a renovation and sort of closed off the back room and the kitchen, and left everything else open with a code on the door lock, so that any pilot would know the code and could access the, you know, the building, so that people traveling in can use it for washroom facilities, pilot lounge, and all that kind of stuff. And I can tell you, it's extremely well-used today, because there's, we have a lot of airplanes coming in for golfing and winery tours and businesses and all sorts of stuff. And when they get off these, sometimes sixteen or nineteen-passenger airplanes, and the pilots carry that garbage off, and all the women run to the biffy, you know, the toilet, the toilet paper and the hand towels are gone in a heartbeat. So it's, it's beneficial, obviously, to the traveling public, and it's a good way of sort of doing it. And the town shares that, some of the cost of operating that facility as it stands. Now, one of the other questions, oh, the last item in terms of what's there. Nav Canada selected Oliver to install a webcam, and that's going to be done. The initial evaluation has been completed, so we're just waiting for the installation date. And so that can be looked up on the internet any time anybody wants to, the flying public wants to check the weather at the airport visually. There'll be a webcam pointing in two or three directions. And there's quite a few of those around the country, and they're quite helpful when pilots are trying to, you know, gauge the weather at a certain location. Having a good sightline, like we all do when driving, you can look at the Hope, Princeton, and you can kind of tell the conditions there, so it's pretty beneficial. Who uses the airport and how often? Well, it's private and commercial users and medevac mainly, and charter people. We don't have any scheduled airlines. We used to be a certified airport, and we voluntarily relinquished that quite a few years ago in consternation with Transport, because it was just too expensive to maintain. And you don't need one in this day and age unless you are running a scheduled service. So there's no point. We're a registered airport, not a certified one. There's all sorts of other criteria to maintain certification. It's just costly if you're not availing yourselves of a scheduled service. So mainly, it's, you know, a lot of private, but we get, we're getting more and more commercial traffic, both charter and, we have probably two or three regular turbine aircraft every week coming in for wineries' business and all sorts of stuff. And there's an awful lot of people that either charter people over for winery tours or golfing tours, or just plainly, plain visiting the valley, and business. More and more business aircraft are coming in. We do have aircraft up to the Beach nineteen hundred, which are used by Seacoastal Airlines that come into Oliver quite readily, King Air three-fifties, Citation Jets, Lear thirty-fives, all that kind of stuff. But in order for Oliver to expand, it would, it would be a major, major, huge undertaking. And with the new technology aircraft, there's probably no reason for it. It would not make any economic sense, we're that, being that close to Penticton. We have nowhere to go to the north, and we have really nowhere to go to the south. So the best we can do is probably add two-hundred feet as a safety margin. Sometime in the future, we'll probably look at that, but at this stage of the game, it's not cost-effective at all. So we'll probably stay where we are. We probably have, oh, I would guesstimate twelve thousand movements a year. And that's only a guesstimate, and it's pretty hard to evaluate. You have to sort of extrapolate from what your gut feeling is. We looked at putting some form of counter, if you will, to gauge traffic. And we had a, I procured an infrared gizmo to shoot across the runway and pick up, you know, traffic movements. But that in itself is a problem, because how do you do it effectively and catch everybody? You don't, because some people will land and turn off before the beam and take off before the beam, and therefore you miss those movements. So you put it on the other side, you miss it the other way. Put it on the taxiway, they don't always come in. So, and then there was a power requirement, all sorts of stuff, we decided, ah, heck with it. It's a lot better if you have somebody at the airport logging flights, but again, that's another expense, unless you have a volunteer that wants to sit there all year long, because it's a, it's a, it's a pretty tough situation. In the wintertime, you'd be bored, and in the summertime, you'd be busy. So we try and categorize and extrapolate what the best we can to try and come up with our, you know, those kind of stats. As far as fees are concerned, we do not charge landing fees, and there's a big reason for that. Landing fees are the bane of any airport, unless you're a big thing with lots of scheduled service, and they can pass it on to the passengers. Any airport that starts to initiate landing fees finds out that all of a sudden their traffic dries up in a heartbeat, because most airports don't. So then the other thing is to try and collect it. How do you collect it? Unless you have somebody on-site all the time, it's, you know, it's a dog's breakfast. You can try for the volunteer stuff, and you know what that's like. So it's really not worth it. All it does is chase traffic away. So you're better off having people come into the town, like happens there. There's so many people that come into town to stay overnight or come in for lunch, because it's close to town, that it's, it's not beneficial. And there's very few small airports that do impose landing fees. Those that do have other ways of making revenue, because they do chase away a lot of traffic. Believe it or not, pilots may be flying, you know, what a lot of people deem are expensive airplanes, but they're no more expensive or probably less than a lot of motorhomes. And so they look at their costs, like anybody else, and say, "If I can go to Oliver for no landing fees, or I go to wherever that has landing fees, I'm going to Oliver." And so they do the same thing anywhere. Parking fees, we charge, we just instituted that. We charge five hundred dollars a year for parking on the grass, and a thousand dollars for parking on the ramp. Tie-downs provided. As far as future plans are concerned, like I said before, we need, we direly need ramp expansion, because we just don't have enough ramp space. And sometimes when, I've been there, when we've had four or five turbine aircraft coming in, and we've got a whole bunch of flying aircraft, and it's just absolutely, it's just your world's worst nightmare of a traffic jam. And you sit there trying to figure out what the hell you're going to do with all these people, and there's nobody there to direct traffic either. So you let them try and sort it out themselves, and that can be a nightmare. So it's, it doesn't happen a lot, often, but it does happen now, and it's happening more and more. So ramp expansion is one of our major goals to accomplish, so we can, a lot of these airplanes cannot be pulled off onto the grass, even though the airport in Oliver is all solid rock. And you can park anything anywhere, for crying out loud, but these airplanes don't want to pull off the ramp, because they'll pick rocks up in their propellers, and that's very expensive. And so they will not, you know, and a turbine aircraft can inject, ingest rocks in the turbine intake, and I don't, you know, you don't even want to go there in terms of that expense, it's just gross. So they will not go off the ramp space. Parallel taxiway to the north is the other thing that we want to try and accomplish, so that we can have an orderly flow of traffic taxiing to the button for takeoff, as opposed to, and same thing, coming back in from landing, so that we eliminate as much as we can the traffic backtracking on the active runway. That works, and it's fine, but if we can establish a parallel taxiway, that is a, you know, more secure way of doing business. The other thing, too, is we can, like I say, turbine aircraft can avail themselves of the jet fuel at the north end. Seeing as there's an F B O or a fixed base operator or business that has jet fuel, we, the society, have not thought of, we've thought about it, but we're not considering putting another tank of jet fuel in to service the public. It's, we're not in the business of trying to provide a huge service. We're just in the business of trying to provide avgas for the general run-of-the-mill airplane that comes in there. Because there is Jet A at the other end, we'd like to leave that as a facility for them to, you know, avail themselves of that business, if we can provide some assistance of letting the traffic get there. Jet fuel is a lot more difficult to maintain than avgas. Avgass is pretty benign, and you can sort of leave it there and not worry about, it doesn't take too much T L C, but jet fuel does, so there's a lot more involved than just throwing another tank. We've got the whole system. For us, it wouldn't be a big deal to throw another tank in. We've got the pumping system and the card reader and the whole nine yards we can connect it to. It's just, just wouldn't make sense. And you need to sell a lot, again, to make it worthwhile. As far as destinations are concerned, a heck of a lot of the traffic that comes into Oliver comes to Seacoast, without a doubt. There's an awful lot. There's one fairly wealthy individual. There's one fairly wealthy individual from Alberta that has a beautiful house on the lake here. He's got three large airplanes that he uses in business and, uh, they come in, drop them off and take off. They don't stay overnight. Uh, they've only been once or twice. They've stayed overnight and he comes in all summer long. Uh, he'll be starting pretty soon and the airplane goes back to work and so it doesn't stay, you know, or whichever airplane he brings in. Uh, he's one of quite a few that, uh, that, uh, come in and have places in Oliver, I mean in Osuias rather. And, uh, a lot of the, uh, golfing people and, uh, winery tour people come and stay here. The hotel facilities in, in Osuias far outweigh those in Oliver as we all know. And so most people are going to come and stay in Osuias. And so there's, um, I'd say probably 60% of the traffic of that nature coming into the airport there comes to Osuias, if not maybe a little more. There is a courtesy van, the Flying Club provide a courtesy van in Oliver for any flying, uh, public and, uh, that can be used on a donation basis. And then Easy Fuel at the north end of town have a car rental fleet. So that, and then we have the taxi service and the taxi service runs back and forth between Oliver and Osuias and trucks people around. Most of the wineries or other businesses that have people come in, I usually have somebody go pick them up. So that's, uh, rather customary to, a few of them maintain a car at the airport and leave it there. So when whoever flies in, they have a vehicle to, to move back and forth. So that kind of answers, I hope, most of the questions that you had. Your worship.
Thank you very much, Paul. Uh, you've been giving us a great deal of information. I have all kinds of notes jotted down here. Um, the reason that we asked Paul to come and, and speak to us is because, um, of course in Osuias, we do have a runway and, um, one of the options that we're looking at is repurposing that airport space into industrial land. And so before we make any decision like that, we are just trying to get as much information as possible. And I think, um, you have been very helpful in, uh, providing us with some information from an airport that's very close to, um, to Osuias. So, um, I would like to, uh, see if there are any questions from any of council, Councilor King.
Thank you, Mayor McCordough. Uh, question, when you mentioned you had 12,000 kind of planes a year, is that counting the plane kind of twice, like going in and out? So there's about 6,000?
Uh, yeah, movement is a takeoff and landing.
Okay, so it's like 6,000?
Uh, yeah.
Okay, that's good. And the next question, you named a few planes. I'm not into airplanes. How many passengers is your biggest plane home?
Oh, probably 19.
19, 18, 19. And the last question, you get any subsidy from the town of Oliver?
We who?
The association? You get a grant? You get any money from the town of Oliver?
Okay, I'm the airport manager, so I'm staff. I work for the town of Oliver.
Oh, okay, okay.
Okay, yeah. So you're probably referring to the Flying Club and the answer to that would be, uh, only in respect of the, um, uh, operation of the building, the terminal building?
But technically you working for the town actually indirectly keeps the airport open?
Sorry?
You kind of keep the airport open, it sounds like?
Uh, yeah, I, yeah, I maintain the airport. Maintain it. The town maintains the airport, but I manage it.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Um, Counselor Rhodes?
Thank you. Um, just, uh, thank you very much, Paul. Um, I had a whole long list of questions you asked and 100% of them. So thank you very much. I just, I, I just, I, I do want to ask one thing about the volunteer aspect, uh, you know, the, the people that actually contribute to the airport and keep it running and that kind of thing. Can you estimate the numbers and are the aviation enthusiasts or are the people that care about the community or a mixture of that? Kind of interested in the number of people that help, you know, keep that airport going.
Well, uh, from back in 1980 when I got here, uh, there was very little there. And, um, uh, from a selfish perspective, there was no power, water, anything. I mean, there was an old fence and there wasn't even a gate. I mean, you, you had sort of this, anyway, weird gate to get through and you couldn't even drag, drag your bag. You had to sort of throw it over the fence, uh, kind of thing. And so, um, and there was four people, I was one of them, who belonged to a, a small flying club, if you will. So I thought, well, maybe we should reactivate that and so we did. We, uh, and it was with great enthusiasm and, um, that's how we got the, the building. The next year, we decided to get the building. We actually bought it from Andy Jensen down here and, uh, trucked it up to Oliver, uh, on Bob Lemke's single drop trailer. He was going to charge us a hundred bucks and he said with all the doggone volunteer help, he says, I ain't going to charge you a damn cent. So, um, yes, it was, you know, all that was done with, uh, with volunteer effort. Um, we didn't really endure ourselves to the, uh, the manager of the highways because, um, uh, you're supposed to haul a building on a, on a low bed and half the width of the doggone building and I knew that. So I lodged the permit everywhere else except highways until the very last minute. And by the time we, um, we got there, um, um, the guy leading the parade was the detachment commander from here, Lou Turcot. Yeah, so, so we had, uh, we had, uh, we had another constable at the front of our procession and we had everybody else in line, B C, you know, B C Tel and Fortis and all, uh, West Guinea Power and all that kind of stuff. So anyway, by the time we got there, he found out and caught us going in the airport and yelled and screamed at the cop who yelled and screamed back at them and, um, that was the end of it. So we got the building there and, and all that kind of stuff and, um, the town knows this, but I'm going to go and say it anyway, even though Heidi's here, but there was a main water line running fairly close by, so we hot tapped that in the middle of the night and we also put in a septic system. And we got it up and running because to try and do otherwise was, uh, the sewer system was so far away, it was just impractical and we had to do something. We did it properly with the people who did that all the time and, uh, knew what they were doing. So it wasn't as if it was done, you know, on a buck sheet basis, it was done properly. So the building got there and, uh, all that kind of stuff. And it's the same thing that happened with the fuel. Uh, the lighting system was designed by myself and a fellow by the name of Ken Smith and, uh, it wasn't an approved system, so we trucked, jumped in a vehicle and ran down to, uh, to CSA and got it all approved. And then three of us spent six weeks installing it. Um, we had the help of, um, we had to have, um, uh, the APAP system is a high voltage system and that required a, a different type of electrician and there was a fellow that worked at, uh, at the, uh, airport in Penticton, worked for transport. But he liked beer and he didn't mind working weekends, so, you know, that kind of thing. I mean, the whole thing, you know, progressed along that, uh, nature. It's just been, uh, an awful lot of, uh, you know, flying club volunteer work and effort throughout the whole, you know, period to try and get a lot of that stuff done. And, and they still do assist in a lot of instances.
Good. Well, we think volunteers are wonderful here too.
Oh, yes.
Uh, Counselor Campbell, you had a question?
Yes, thank you, Mayor McCordough. And, and thank you, that was a wealth of information, Paul. Um, my question is in regards to the private hangars and how that works as far as the land's concerned and, and who owns these? Not specifically who, but are these people that live here? Are these people, uh, from Alberta that, that come in frequently and, and who are the, who owns those hangars?
Okay, they do a land, land lease from the town, um, and, uh, then whoever wants to construct the hangar or that owns the hangar, uh, people build the hangar and they own them and on, on a, on a land lease of normally 25 plus a 15-year renewal is the, is the sort of the norm. And, um, and then, uh, from the most part, they, um, most of the people are, are local, but they, they, um, they're running a little more farther, farther field now. Um, there's a lot of Penticton people that have a hangar in Oliver and all through Willbrook from down here, a lot of people from down here. Um, but there's others looking that, uh, are coming to Oliver from, uh, they're going to be living in places like Vernon and, uh, you know, a little farther field because Hangeridge is very expensive and it's hard to get now in other airports. I mean, Kelowna's impossible, um, and Vernon's getting, you know, filled up pretty good and, and more expensive. So, uh, you know, we're, we're getting more expensive too. Our hangar values have increased over the last five years exponentially. It's, um, you know, you used to be able to buy a hangar there for 15 grand, 12 grand, for crying out loud. You can't do that anymore. Thank you.
Um, Counselor Youngberg?
Uh, thanks, Paul. Very informative and thank you very much for your time. So how much would you, uh, rent a hangar for, per year?
Uh, the fellow who built the new 10 bay tee hangars is renting them for 450 a month.
$450?
Yes, yes.
And he pays the cost of the construction of it?
Yes. Yes, that's correct.
Can you see that there would be any merit in combined use between Oliver and Osuias if Osuias were to go ahead and, um, endorse the expansion of this airport? Can you see that, uh, it would be an advantage to, um, the air traffic that you think has used your facility? Would there be combined use?
I, I don't know that you'd find much combined use. I mean, right now, there's people that use the strip here for practice and place to go. Everybody wants a place to go, even if it's just to land and get out, stretch your legs and jump back in and, and, uh, so, I mean, you know, it's used for that. But, um, in, in terms of combined use, I, I wouldn't see any combined use. I think, uh, your facility here has the, um, has that, has a great location and I'm sure you all know that. And the location would be better enhanced if the property to the north could be purchased at a reasonable price and therefore that gives you the opportunity to expand that we don't have in Oliver. Um, but, uh, expansion is, is a wonderful word, but it's damn expensive. And, uh, one of the things that you, I think, back in the day, um, I was, uh, asked to come to, uh, to help form a airport committee when it was paved by the previous CAO. And so I spent my time with, you know, Steve and Terry Underwood and, and Peter Brothers, um, you know, supervising or just sort of, um, refereeing the paving process and all that kind of stuff. And the unfortunate thing is, probably you all know, there was a study that commissioned by Terry, uh, for, uh, for the Geotech and, uh, the remedial work on the subbase was never done. So it's, it's the old story that, uh, you can't build a four-story house on a single-story foundation, you know? So I think that might've been, if something's been done since, I'm not aware of it, but back then that, uh, that, that was not accomplished. So it's pretty hard to, you know, when you're going to expand and you want something that's going to handle much larger traffic, you have to have the basic facilities to, to do that, so.
And I think that was another part of my question is working together to develop, you know, a stronger aviation area in the Oliver, Osuias, um, area if we were to decide to go ahead. Because it seems to me that there's a lot of traffic in Oliver and you may not be able to handle the traffic 10 years from today if it continues to increase because you can't expand.
Uh, well, I think the, it depends on the kind of traffic, Carol. Uh, if, if it's, if it's much larger type aircraft, the answer is definitely no. And nor would we even try because we're too close to Penticton, which is a major airport to handle the 37s of the world. So we're not even going to bother trying for crying out loud because it doesn't make any sense. Then you're getting into, you know, certification again and much more expensive, uh, ramifications of, of all that kind of stuff. And when an airport's that close, uh, it's, it's like, it's like, um, Vernon is to, to Kelowna. I mean, it's close, it's a reliever airport. And it hasn't gone to any huge doggone extent to try and compete with, with, uh, with, uh, with Kelowna.
No.
It acts as a reliever and it does that just like we probably do so, to some degree to Penticton. Um, I think, uh, if Osuias was ever going to do, look at something in terms of an expansion, um, then you'd want to look at a really good regional type of airport, you know, up to 5,000 feet that would compete with Penticton, you know? And where you could get that kind of traffic in here. But that's very expensive and, uh, how much are you going to get really? You know, it's, uh, look at Penticton itself. It's in pretty dire doggone situation for crying out loud. Many years ago, when people were traveling to Kelowna to get an airplane an hour earlier, I said, beware, you'll be doing that for the rest of your life. And you're going to bypass Penticton and not support the traffic there and that's what's happened. And, uh, you know, we've had, until recently, you couldn't even get to Calgary from Penticton by, other than going to Vancouver. You had one carrier, a Canada, for how many of the last 15 years? And it's a real tough business. Now WestJet's in there, let's hope they're going to stay there, you know? Uh, Penticton's a tough place to, as we all know. Uh, if anybody going out of there in the winter holidays, for crying out loud, you, you bite your nails wondering whether you're going to make it, for crying out loud, because the flights can't get in because of the approach systems. And, uh, both CAMOPS and Kelowna have, uh, fought with that for years and that's where the money's going and that's why the hub system is there. And, um, even Kelowna with ILS systems and, uh, all the new stuff is, they still suffer some weather problems, but not nearly like Penticton.
But there would be sufficient traffic, I think, for Osuias? That's what you're indicating? Because you've got a lot of traffic already in the Oliver airport.
Yeah, we have a lot of traffic, but it's, the only, the only restriction we have right now is when a whole bunch of it comes at the same time on the ramp.
In the summertime?
Yeah, and that's it. You know, I mean, if we expand the ramp, the traffic itself is not a problem by a long shot. Yeah. And so like I say, it doesn't make any economic sense for us to try and, and that's the whole thing. We're getting the traffic and, and we don't feel it's economically viable to try and, um, expand or increase, yeah, so.
Thanks.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Romanco, you had a question?
I have a couple of questions and it just relates to that subject. Have you done any estimates as to what those expansions would cost? Uh, from what I was hearing, you're basically looking at two phases. One was the parallel runway and the other one was the, I forget exactly what it was, but...
The ramp, yeah.
Yeah, the ramp. So have you done any cost estimates for that?
Yeah, both would probably be around two and a quarter. 225,000, yeah. Just the, 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 the half, the taxiway, uh, the parallel taxiway, I think we figured it was 175,000 and that's, uh, that runs from the button to the north end, so that's a half. And that's the taxiway. And then the ramp would probably be another 50 grand.
Okay. And a second question is, uh, the 35 people or 35, uh, private hangars, do they pay like an annual landing fee of any sort or, or a use fee, uh, for the, uh, for the facility?
No, no, they pay, they pay leases and taxes.
So the, so it's considered the use of, uh, the facility is built into their lease of the land?
Yes. Yeah.
Well, thank you very much, um, Mr. Dumery. We do appreciate your vast knowledge of, of the airport and I know that this is going to be something that we're going to continue to talk about for a while because there's always, uh, numerous issues and, and probably number one being cost. So thank you very much for your time and for, for coming. We appreciate that.
Thank you. My pleasure.
Um, moving on, uh, our next section is business and we have a request for support to save Canada Post. We have a letter. Should, should, Mr. Romanco, would you like to talk about this?
Yes, uh, this is, uh, part of the general correspondence and I thought it, I felt it appropriate to bring this to council to see whether there was, uh, council wished to bring it to a regular meeting, uh, to pass a resolution of this, uh, nature or just to accept the correspondence of, uh, as information?
Thank you. Um, Counselor Rhodes?
Uh, thank you, Mayor McCordough. Um, you know, I think I'd just like to offer a motion to receive, uh, I don't see any compelling reason to support or not support it. Uh, if we're going to support it, I believe that we need a lot more information than send this particular, um, correspondence.
Are you seconding that motion, Counselor Campbell? Uh, is there any other comments about this? Okay, all in favor? Thank you. That was carried. Uh, next is the Silga resolution on internet voting.
So at the last, uh, committee, the whole meeting, uh, the, uh, the subject of internet voting was, uh, brought forward with an action request, uh, from the administration and, Counselor Rhodes to, uh, uh, bring forth that information. So Counselor Rhodes circulated the information. So now, uh, the administration is looking to whether this, uh, should be referred to the, uh, council meeting for, uh, resolution and, uh, and debate, uh, to bring forward a resolution to the Silga or whether this, uh, matter should not be pursued any, any longer.
Thank you. Um, I think Counselor Rhodes would like to speak to... I think Counselor Rhodes would like to speak to this. Am I correct?
Thank you again, Mayor McCordoff. So, yeah, I was kind of the starter of this particular thing. I know that the report itself is very, very negative and in fact recommends against any kind of internet voting in our province. My, my comment about that, and I know this is always going to be controversial, is that, you know, many times when these reports and these studies and these kind of things are commissioned in our province, you know, at the end of the day, they're designed to sit on the shelf and I would definitely put this particular report in that, in that category. Every municipality, every office has hundreds of reports that just sit on the shelf and nobody ever uses. This particular one does not really, in my opinion, address the dynamics of internet voting and how successful it has been in many other communities, not only in Canada, but all over North America. And we, you know, it's just so hard to, you know, when the report is accepted by the province, it's always, everybody always think that that's the way it is and it's the right thing, but in this particular case, you know, I would strongly argue whether that report really had a good consensus or a good feeling of the citizens of British Columbia and, you know, they're not always right, you know? That's one of the driving forces behind these things and, you know, I just, I don't like the report, I don't think it went about it in the right way. I know an awful lot of the members that are, that participated into that report are of a generation that are very anti-internet voting. I, you know, and I'm not being disrespectful and I'm not trying to offer negative comments, but it's important for us to be objective about these kinds of things. Sadly, in British Columbia, sadly in Osueas and sadly in all of Canada, there is a tremendous amount of disinterest in voting in our elections. Our last election in our community last November, our turnout results were dreadful and it's embarrassing, really. And we're almost at the point where elections are not really falling into the real democratic process. When you eliminate so much of your population that will not go out and vote, are you really getting a good representation of the people in the community? This is one more tool that we can provide to our residents in our community and hopefully throughout this province that allows them to vote on devices that are important to a younger generation in our community. And that's my main, you know, inspiration and those are my words to try and encourage this council to support a resolution going to SILGA. Just because the report says or the study says that no, it's not worth it, it won't work, does not mean that they're right, so that's...
Thank you. Counselor Campbell?
Yeah, I mean, looking at the past election, as Counselor Rhodes just stated, with low turnout and we look at, you know, any of us that were knocking doors and saw how many doors, how many lights were off and people weren't in town is one issue and the other one, in my mind, is young people. Seems to me the success of getting people engaged, younger people engaged, is all internet-based and along with internet voting comes initiatives on the internet to get votes out and I think that combined process would certainly impact younger voters coming out, so I'm supportive of what Counselor Rhodes...
Thank you. See, so there was a study, an independent panel on internet voting in British Columbia, which was, the recommendations came out in February two thousand and fourteen. So what we're talking about here is quite a new, a new recommended report and so they did have good and bad on there, some places where, that did have internet voting and kept it and some places that, that did not for various reasons. So there's a lot, a lot more to this, but my, my thinking is that, that we would like to bring it forward to SILGA, Southern Interior Local Government Association Meeting in order to keep it current and keep it on the agenda and not just forget about it. So, oh, Counselor Youngberg?
Just to comment, in the resolution or considering the resolution, I think it would be great to point out that provincial government has changed the date for the upcoming election, so they've covered that field, but they haven't covered the field of the younger people. And I think electronic voting is just the thing of the future. Work on it now so we can afford it.
In four years, right. So what we would like then is a resolution to have, to ask for a report for the February sixteenth meeting. Am I correct, Mr. Romanko?
That's right. We would bring a report and I guess a draft resolution for council's consideration.
All right, so am I assuming Counselor Rhodes, Counselor Campbell, that you, that's the resolution?
Yes, I'd like to offer that resolution based on that wording. I'd also like to ask council and staff if there's any, any possibility of looking at perhaps striking some kind of a committee or a task force or something that might allow us to gather more information on it that's unique to our community rather than the provincial perspective and I would also like to mention that we do have a past counselor that is willing to sit on that committee and, and help organize it, which would help minimize the input from staff and other folks in the community.
Do we have time to do that? Because this needs to be done by the end of the month. I'm not sure whether we have time to legally go through, doing, getting, setting up a committee?
Well, I'm looking and we have budget meetings tenth and eleventh, which will tie up all, you know, my, my time relative to this and then the agendas have to be out on the twelfth. So next week, I would say is impossible, would have to be done this week and it'd have to be done in the next, actually tomorrow afternoon or Wednesday is when I would draft this resolution.
Could that be done without setting up a committee?
I would, I would say not, you know, it would spend, it would take me more time to set up a committee than it would to, to draft a resolution. But I would certainly would appreciate some insights and some help from, from members of council to assist me in this.
Sure. Do you have a suggestion?
I should have clarified the, the committee aspect of it. I was looking more at the long-term prospect of it after we get our, so we can, if we can move forward with the resolution to SILGA after the fact, I feel that there would be value, you know, to our community to have a committee that will provide, you know, a unique perspective for Osueas rather than the provincial one that we got in that study.
So that's two separate issues. The one right now is to do a, to do a report resolution for the next meeting and we have a mover and a seconder for that? All in favor? Thank you. Well, that...
I guess from what I'm hearing is that, yes, there are two separate issues and the second issue, when I look, hearken back in our business planning meeting and that would, that would be where council would take an advocacy role and, and that would go on your, on your little chart as an advocacy role and then, you know, work with what I, probably some very excellent resources here in, in the community to develop that, that further.
Good. That makes sense, I think.
Just so I understand this, so the committee would be formed and would the committee have input at, when the resolutions floored at SIGLA?
At SILGA?
SILGA, sorry.
No, I think that somebody, whoever's going to SILGA would present the resolution if it is, if it is forward, if we choose at the next meeting to forward it, that, that would, somebody would speak to it at SILGA, but the committee would not be probably done by that time. So we've got four years to do that.
The, yeah, because the, the resolution has to go to SILGA before the twenty-seventh.
Yes, that's why we have, we're in a bit of a rush to get that done. Okay, that's, that was, that was voted on? Ms. Scott, we're okay? All right, I would like to have somebody move that we adjourn the meeting at ten AM.
Show move.
King Campbell, thank you very much. All in favor? Okay, meeting is adjourned and we will have a five-minute break before we start the end camera.